I'd like to call the open session meeting of the air planning board for May 26, 2020. Together, call the order. Our first item agenda is to first item on the agenda is general business is to approve the agenda. Excuse me, Mark?
Yes.
We don't have any requests from DPW for any kind of releases or anything this time this evening?
Uh, no, not this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so I take a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Jeff, before we approve, did you want to amend the agenda of, for example, the site plan review for Cannon Gate? Is that removed from the agenda for this evening or is that still on the agenda?
Now, let's, let's get a motion, get a second, and during the discussion part, we'll take care of that.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the agenda for the May 26, 2020, meeting of the air planning board.
Thank you, do it a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Diskin, any discussion? Mr. Krantz?
Yes, how about that Cannon Gate? Is that still part of this or not?
Uh, no, we placed that on the agenda at the time because we thought that they were going to bring in the materials for tonight's meeting, but at the last minute, GPR requested that that case be pulled up on June 9. So that will not be part of tonight's discussion.
Great. Did we, Mark, did they send a letter to us, please?
Uh, they sent a letter, yes, they, they said it could be off the agenda, but we, we do need to remind them that they need to get all the materials to us by Monday, June 1.
I'm gonna let you take care of that, sir, okay? Thanks. I also would like to make a quick, uh, so just reading through the agenda, we've got the continuing public hearing for special permit, 14 Washington, continued site plan review for 14 Washington Street, and then we had the large scale ground mounted solar, and then Cannon Gate. So since Cannon Gate is no longer on the agenda, my request, I'm going to be fine if that's okay with everybody, we'll handle it. Washington Street and then-
Do you have a comment first on the Cannon Gate?
Yes, yes, please.
So I did take a look at the DPW comments and they referred to a site plan by GPR of May 20th and also a stormwater management report by GPR of May 2020. Neither of which I saw in our email, so I don't recall seeing those two documents at all. Excuse me.
Kyle Burchard is here from GPR to address the materials for Cannon Gate and they will be forthcoming for the June 9 meeting, but I'll let Kyle speak to that directly, of course.
Evening, Kyle.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that I did email that information off. I was in the middle of COVID, I guess we have this, I sent that off to Mark on the 8th of, of May. I do have the DPW comments, there's additional investigation that's required in order to address those comments and that is starting this Thursday. I doubt that Monday, June 1, is going to be enough time to complete everything that would need to be done to be on the next board agenda or else we would just continue.
Okay, so what I mentioned, I'm mentioning that I don't think Mark Archibald sent it to the planning board, is that correct, Mark and I?
Uh, boy, I'm sorry.
I don't remember getting it and I checked all my emails.
If that's the case, I apologize, uh.
So Ken, I also sent, I copied you and Jeff on the 8th of May on that and I'm-
Well, I got the letter, I got the DPW letter.
All that. No, I'm sorry, the Cannon Gate stormwater management report and the site plan drawings and application was sent on May 8. It was a total of 14 megabytes in the, in the file, so I don't know if, you know, usually the air mail server is able to keep up with that, but I'll forward it again right now.
I actually, I, I do see it, Kyle. So sorry for the snafu and let's, um, thank you very much, because I do remember looking through it.
Thank you.
Whether or not it got to Ken, I have no idea, Kyle.
Yeah, I got the, I got the Meramec one, the original drawings, the eight pages, but what I'm saying is I didn't get the little, it was another site plan, that's the one I'm talking about. And a stormwater report, so anyhow.
Thanks.
Move on, thank you.
Appreciate it. And Kyle, I know it's been a challenge, you've been working hard on this, I just want to say once again, thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Sure.
To get this move forward, um. And-
No problem, my pleasure.
It's, it's been a lot of work. Um, I actually did read through the DPW comments. We are not going to handle this this evening and I took a look at some of the submissions, submissions from you, but as soon as Mark said we're not going to deal with it tonight, I actually moved on to something else, but thanks again for that. So I've got a motion to approve the agenda and a second, we are going to remove the site plan review parking associated improvements at Cannon Gate Sandy Pond Road from this evening's agenda and move it to the next meeting, which we believe to be June 6, correct?
Uh, no, June 9.
June 9, thank you very much. Uh, any further comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the changes for the agenda?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. So this takes us to the continuing public hearing for special permit for 14 Washington Street. Mark, can I ask you quickly to do a quick, um, update for folks? There's been a lot going around on emails and stuff and I want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yep. Okay, originally, they applied earlier in the spring for a special permit, the end site plan review at 14 Washington Street, the historic fire station. Uh, back at that time, they were planning to locate some of the required parking off-site, which would have required a special permit under two sections of the bylaw, section 9.14B and 9.15C5. Uh, that would have been to locate some of the required parking spaces, um, off the property. However, it's my understanding and in speaking with Kyle earlier that that may no longer be the case and so the special permit request may be modified and he will address that. Also, there was a parking, uh, there's another special permit that has to go with section 9.15C1, which states that no parking should be located closer to the front lot line than the front lot line of the principal building except by special permit from the planning board. Uh, so that one, I believe, is still in effect. As far as the required number of spaces for six apartments in the historic fire station, right now, the parking requirement is 1.5 spaces per unit. You multiply that by six and you get nine, uh, but there's also a requirement for one visitor parking space. So the total, the grand total of parking required would be 10. At the request of the applicant, uh, we also looked into the ability of the planning board to use the waiver section in the parking, uh, part of the bylaw, which is section 9.110, which is a multi-part section called modifications and waivers. And back last week, I did obtain a legal opinion from town council that stated that the planning board can exercise authority under that section, provided that the applicant meets the criteria as spelled out in the bylaw. I'll go over that real quick because that'll figure prominently in our discussion, uh, tonight and later. Planning board may approve modifications or waivers of the requirements of this section 9.1, which is the entire part of the section, telling reasons of safety, aesthetic, site design, or environmental impact. And then it goes on to say where the planning board requires a special permit for approval of requested modification or waiver. We use the normal special permit criteria of section point 34, that's fine. Then it goes on to, uh, subpart C. Parking space requirements may be modified when one or more of the following conditions are met to the satisfaction of the planning board. Number one, peak parking needs generated by onsite uses, uses occur at different times. Two, a significant number of employees, tenants, patrons, or other parking users of the site are common to and shared by more than one use on the site. And three, a parking management plan approved by the planning board is implemented with occupancy of the building or buildings. And it goes into details of what that plan entails. So my understanding is that they are now proposing to keep all the parking onsite, which would be less than the full number 10. And the planning board, according to town council, is unable to do that provided they can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that they meet the three criteria, A, B, and C, in that section 9.110. So I had, when I spoke with Kyle earlier today, I asked him to brief the planning board on what they would like to change for the amended, or you might say revised, uh, special permit application. So that, that's the update. In summary, I did send out the town council's letter to the planning board as part of the packet last week. Hopefully people have read it. I realize that the parking section is somewhat confusing. Uh, there are different sections which refer to different things and it's, uh, takes a little bit of work to keep them all straight, but.
That's why we get paid the big bucks, guys. Okay, thank you. Um, so what is it we're going to try and accomplish this evening with the hearing?
Uh, my advice would be to hear from the applicant's representative, Mr. Burchard, is to why they're proposing the changes to the special permit application. The board, uh, there are two aspects to the 14 Washington Street application, one of the special permit and waivers and the, the other is the site plan. Uh, now as far as the site plan approval is concerned, it's my understanding that the superintendent of public works has requested additional information on stormwater management, which I believe GPR is still, uh, developing. Uh, so, you know, we don't have that. There was also some concern about, uh, signage along Washington Street to alert drivers that people might be pulling in and out of the parking spaces there, which would be a new experience in front of that building. So those are the site plan issues that are outstanding, so.
Thank you.
Depending on how the board feels, uh, you know, the board can either receive the information, uh, from GPR this evening and consider whether they believe all the criteria are met and do that this evening, or it's possible to, uh, take that up on June 9 after more deliberation. Since this information is somewhat new, uh, it was received since the last application. So I know that in the past, that was a concern of the planning board, that when you have to rethink how the plan might work, you might need a little bit more time, so.
Well, I, I think it's a, excuse me. I seem to be tripping all over my own tongue this evening. I'm not sure if it's a little bit more time or, um, just make sure we give it the proper consideration, uh, unfortunately. Time has become part of it. Uh, if it's okay with the members of the board, Kyle, why don't we hear from you on what's going on with the parking request?
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, this application is somewhat complicated due to the constraints of the lot. We did go through a reconfiguration of the types of requests of the board that we are making from the initial submission, which was made at a time when we needed to get an application in to secure a process, to obtain funding, to accomplish the rehabilitation of the, of the building. Um, so we did start off with intending to change the, uh, or to have the additional required spaces be off-site. However, when we kind of, you know, pulled up our heads, uh, after the COVID crisis seemed to stabilize, we realized this parking management idea is really something that applies directly to this site as a, a group of six one-bedroom, um, apartments that will be next to several different modes of transit and transportation, public transportation that's available. So that's going to make for a very well-suited group of people that, uh, will have access to that. So we, we believe that we do comply with the intent of 9.1.10C, which is to provide the parking management plan to evidence that the parking that would normally be required is not required of this particular site. In addition to the fact that the town has a transect six, which this is just outside of, but within a stone's throw of, it seems to make sense that this particular project would be allowed to have a reduction in the parking requirements, uh, due to all this. And now, all this information I recognize has not reached you. I think certainly there's been some yeah, difficulties with the, uh, with the, the virus and confusion and going remote and everything, but, um, I've just sent an update of everything off to Mark just now to bring the board up to speed. And what I'm relaying to you verbally, I'm hoping you will be able to review for the next hearing and understand what it is that we're proposing and why, and that we can go through your actual question, informed questions at the next hearing. So there is that parking modification request, which is at the top of our revised narrative of requests. The structure of everything else is really up to the board and how they want to approach it. I put next a, a waiver of the design standards, which is pursuant to what Mark said, your abilities within section 9.1.10. That waiver being of 9.1.5C2, which is saying that we have to, we cannot be within eight feet of the front of the building. And nor can we be, uh, within 10 feet of the property line. These are, you know, uh, for, you know, new development, this is something that can be accommodated, but we have an unusually unique and constrained site, both by the property itself and by the existing structure that's being refurbished, so.
I was gonna say, its previous use was access to the street.
Exactly, precisely, and so that, all that access-
I think that's understood, yeah.
Right, all that access to the street, we are not worsening that existing non-conformity. Instead, we are improving it by adding in some landscaping, uh, some landscaping islands. We're actually putting in the striping, we are putting in, uh, vertical granite curving, uh, that's spaced about uh, three and a half feet from the building wall to be able to provide that hard stop to the wheels. It's, it's not a overhang, most vehicles don't have an overhang that long, so the building ought to be safe. So these are the reasons why we're requesting that waiver of the, the bylaw, which is this particular one, uh, is at the planning board's discretion to waive. Then we have the, um, the special permit request. And that's the, the big one, which, you know, is to allow us to have the off-street parking in basically the front yard to the building. There are, there are some very stringent restrictions on this, which I would hope, uh, because of the existing non-conformity that we're not worsening, that the, the board would find its way, uh, to be able to allow us to proceed with the project because there is no other place to put the parking other than between the building and Washington Street. So between the building, you have the parking and then you have a full five-foot sidewalk and then you have the street. And this is, this is the space that's available there for us and that's what we're proposing to do with it. Put the parking and then put the sidewalk and there's the street. So with all that, um, you know, we've looked at the alternatives, which are, as our initial application stated, we would, we could have proposed to encumber other downtown properties with the a reservation of additional spaces on that property, which just is a, it's, it's not a good idea for that whole downtown area and really doesn't accomplish anything once, once we get through the idea that this is a transit-oriented it, a development. I mean, it wasn't designed that way, but yeah, sorry, Jonathan?
Kyle, I have, I have a number of questions here. I'm very concerned about this. Because what, what it sounds like to me is that what we're going to see on the drawings is parking spaces between Washington Street and the front of the building, correct?
That's right.
Okay. When I recall in one of our very last meetings before COVID, that we had a discussion where none of us liked it, the parking in front of the, of the, of the, of the firehouse. But we kind of thought to accelerate the process, you can get your grant application through for the funding, we're going to okay it for now with the understanding that this would be corrected later. So what I'm hearing from you, Kyle, is you're saying, well, too bad, guys, it's not corrected.
Whoa.
What's the deal there?
Hey, hold on a moment, please, Mr. Krantz. I have had no part of that discussion. I don't appreciate, you know, being accused of saying, whoa, too bad. That's not at all what I'm saying. What I looked at is the geometric capabilities that are on this property for being able to provide parking. Initially, there was this concept that the parking could be provided on the side of the building. Problem is, we have an adjacent parking lot right next to this building.
Excuse me, Kyle, that adjacent parking lot is owned by Calvin Moore, correct?
Yes.
The owner of this new pro, of this project of 14 Washington Street, correct?
Yes. Yes?
So what's the problem with the encumbrance of the, of the, of the spaces in the property that Mr. Moore already owns?
Well, if you're looking at the overall downtown vicinity and you're talking about overall parking in this area that's at a premium for what is the new, the rail that's there as well as, uh, the mark train, uh, bus that goes around, the idea is not to lose additional parking. You'd end up with a net reduction in parking in the downtown area if you tried to park on the side of this building. That's just a geometric fact. So, and, and the, the trying to get up into this location also has elevation constraints because you've got an existing building with a foundation that's several feet higher than the adjacent parking lot. So by the time we get something sloped up and ramped up to where it's not going to require some kind of uh, extended frost footing for the existing building foundation to accommodate the parking on the side building, you're, you're, you're going very far away from what might be considered the intent of the downtown district. I'm, you know, I'm sorry you feel bamboozled somehow. I, I don't know who said that that would be resolved later and be, be, be made to be something other than parking on the street. But there, we can talk through the, and where, where the, what's written in the letter are the considerations of alternatives. Now, we can, we can go through the exercise, showing you the geometry on the side of the building and why that parking doesn't work and the grading associated with that, that will not function properly. We could also go down the road of section 9.1.8, which is to talk about reservation of parking on the property. And I can talk about why that won't work because, again, there is no way to fit it unless you do something on the order of a four-stack, a four-deep stacked, um, uh, stadium-style parking on the south side of the building. Now, there's another option that you could consider if you, if you wanted to go this way, if you thought that this was the best idea. Along the frontage of this building, you could put, you could squeeze in 10 parking spaces. And you know what it would look like? The same way that it looks today, all pavement. No green space, no handicap spot, which would be a problem. So, you know, there's a, there's only so many ways to fit this in here and I'm not trying to, you know, tell you that nothing could ever work. I'm just saying the lengths that if, we would have to go to in order to make something work and the end-all appearance of it would be very unpleasant.
So what we're left with then is if, just from what I've heard, that you're putting the parking in the front, which is one, a contravention of the current regulations that they stand, that requires a special permit, and number two, would require special signage to warn drivers of this, of, of, of traffic that wasn't there before. Am I right or am I missing something?
To be completely honest, the signage is the first, when it came out of Mark Archibald's mouth, was the first time I heard anything about signage. So that wasn't in the DPW comments. And, and so I'm at a loss. So the special permit, you know, you might look at this as an existing non-conforming condition, situation that we have at this particular building. There's, there's, there's all this pavement in the front of the building that was the function of it for, well, since 1934 until whenever they stopped using it, and it, it, that's how it functioned. Now, there's four garage bay doors there, so, you know, arguably, the trucks coming in and out of there might not constitute, you know, residential traffic coming into and leaving the site. But I would suggest that if the parking is not on Washington Street, that the project doesn't happen. Geometrically-
Do you want to comment in that, Mr. Chairman, or?
Um, well, so this happens to be something that I've been, we've been tracking very closely, Kyle. One of the challenges of this property remains the, uh, parking. I just had a thought and excuse me for being humorous for a moment, we could always issue every car park there a siren and a set of lights, but, um, that's, I'll get it. Trying to lighten the mood here a little bit. This is, this is going to be a thorny issue. The applicant, the application process that went through, the proposal that came to the town, the decision to go with the applicant was done, um, because of a favorable, um, outcome with the selection committee. The proposal itself actually states that the proponent is the only one who, and I'm happy to share this if you want, but suffice to say that the proposal, um, well, actually, let me do that if you don't mind. Cindy, can I just share a screen? I think I can, hold on. I just want to share a little correct one.
Sorry, I was talking to you.
That's okay. Uh, can you all see on your screen the proposal redevelopment?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Thanks. So this is, this is not to continue the argument, this is just to make a point. Um, and this is one of the things that came to, came to mind very quickly. So this was a 20-page document. I have a copy of it, you're all welcome to it. I, I took some, in some pages out just to make it easier. On page four of the original document, and I've, I've added the green highlighting because this is our, germane to our conversation right now. And this is from Mr. Moore to the selection, to the, to, as a proposal for the building, and says, I own the adjoining property. This building must become part of Page Moore Building and Architecture. By removing the south wing, it will provide an opportunity for that area and the Page Moore parking lot to become one. I am the only, only, only person that can do this. If we move on, and I believe this is still talking about parking, with the front parking area removed, we can now designate and create a new sidewalk along Washington Street. Further comment in the document, this is on page five of the document, where are they going to park vehicles? They don't have the room or access. I do. And I believe he's talking about merging the, uh, parking from lots next door.
Right.
It goes on, it goes on, and I'm not doing this for argument's sake, Jonathan, this is for information, please, okay? It's an argument, but it's an informational one. And then you go on, I think this is page 14 of the document. The exterior of the original building will be saved, parking will be provided with the merger of the current Page Moore law. And this will go on, this will minimize vehicles from forming a park. And I lost some of the green highlight when I was, uh, making this. I don't know why it shrunk down when it became a PDF. Further along, it says onsite parking will be provided with the current Page Moore law, which will be combined with the area that will be created by the removal of the south wing. And offsite parking, this should not be necessary. If it is for visiting guests, I have the own the Page Moore law, adjoining law, and the church lot across the street that I have a long-term lease with. So, um, that's basically those are your main parts of this. I'm gonna stop the sharing. Um, so Kyle, I think some of the reasons why you made, um, you know, this, this is something that we as members of the board are, I think, aware of individually and as a board. There was a heck of a, uh, premium, if you will, for Mr. Moore to move forward with the, with the purchase of this property. I think it was somewhere fifty cents on the dollar of the next, of the next, um, uh, proposal that we had. With that being said, I think we also knew that parking was going to be a challenge. In my mind, in my mind, there's two challenges and by all means, board members, correct me if I'm wrong. The number of spaces needed for the building, that's going to be predicated upon the number of units in the building. The building currently has six units, nine spaces plus, plus a, um, visitor spot, 10 spaces. That's our bylaw pretty much cut and dry, straightforward. Um, if it was a four-unit building, we'd have five, or we'd have eight or nine, depending on how the units go and the size like that. Um, I think, and I do appreciate the proponent's, um, statement that it is in a transit-oriented area. As a matter of fact, we have other people who are interested in how parking happens in this area and adjoining areas downtown. So those are- So tho- those are, those, I see them as the um the two issues. If the parking goes in front of the building as it is now, we lose. It it, I think everybody loses. I'm not exactly sure why the proponent has decided that using the space in the adjoining lots is no longer a viable alternative. Um, I, I don't fully understand that, and I would ask that question. And Kyle, you may not be in a position to answer that right now. That might be in the proponent has to answer. Um, and by all means, whatever information you have, I think will be valuable for us to work with. Um, I think those are my unscripted comments and where I come from on this.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that information. I had not seen that verbiage previous to tonight.
Don't worry about it.
Thank you for sharing that.
And I I can, I'm happy to send you the whole document. It's actually the proposal that was submitted by Mr. Moore.
I'll obtain that document myself. Thank you very much, though. I appreciate it.
Didn't want you, I don't want you to feel like you're stepping up in front of the firing squad right now, Kyle.
Well, I think I, I think I I kinda did, and that's my own fault.
Uh, no.
Rightfully on your part.
No, um, I, as I said to you a while back, uh, we can do this without arguing. So I can understand Mr. Krantz's um being upset.
And I can as well. Thank you.
So I appreciate that, and I thank you all for putting up with that little bit of a presentation. As a matter of fact, uh, I had to act, get special permission to share my screen from Cindy today about that. Um, so we all have now, all that information is now on the table. Um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Uh, just to underscore though, that is not any planning board ruling. That is the proponent's application. And I would go so far as to say, making assumptions about what could be achieved through the planning board, but none of that was ever achieved.
I think, I I think that's, I I think that is very much true, Nathan. Um, part of what I'm, what I'm looking at now is something that, um, you know, our our process has been slow. Um, Kyle's doing a great job. COVID's a challenge. We're all little dis- little um disengaged, if you will. But one of the things that, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I looked at this building. I think it's a great opportunity, and one of the challenges is parking in an upward unit center. Um, how I feel about cars and how the world uses cars and how our bylaw works are all very different. Um, and I think we can find a way. I was hoping that it was going to be a mixture of both, and I recognize and understand that parking is going to be at a premium downtown. Um, actions we take that allow buildings to not have the parking that is that is believed to be necessary is going to put a higher pressure on other areas. Uh, right across the street from the um fourteen Washington Street, uh, they're taking down the old and the old anti-room to the theater. I imagine that's going to become a parking. I don't know what that's going to be. I haven't seen any plans for it, so I don't know. I haven't asked. Um, but parking is going to become a premium downtown. Uh, Kyle, I think you've got a little more information, and you might now better understand sometimes where the board's coming from. And
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry that you didn't have that.
Um, okay. Not your fault.
I I get it. So, um, with that being said, um, I don't know that we can actually act on the parking this evening.
Well, this, this, one of the problems, Mr. Chairman, if I might, is that we don't have these requests in writing for us to look at, number one, and we don't have the new site plan, number two, and we don't have DPW resolution, number three, but I'd like to make sure that we, I know it's more difficult now. It is much more difficult, obviously, for us to not be able to get down there and lay the plans on a table and, you know, take a look at them. Um, but I think we need to see a lot more in writing uh to know a little bit better how to make the right decision. And I'd like to say a couple of things on my own that, um, I was on that selection committee. I happen to be the citizen representative of that selection committee. And there was no question about it that one of the things that weighed heavily in Calvin's favor was the fact that he had the extra land and parking available. Um, that's, I spoke in favor to the board of selectmen, actually, and there were higher bids, but that's besides the point.
I sat through that speech.
One thing I wanted to comment on though was, in our regulations, as you folks probably know, and I'm sure Kyle knows, in the downtown business district now, what we call it, you know, the form-based code district, we actually have no requirement, no minimum parking requirement for commercial and industrial uses. We only have this parking requirement for residential uses. So for all intents and purposes, the lot that has all the commercial parking actually has a zero requirement, although it's extremely valuable uh because of the number of people that use the facilities that Calvin has there, you know, especially for parties and whatnot. But it it weakens the argument that the, it strengthens our argument, weakens is the applicant's argument. I believe that um, the parking cannot be shared with the adjoining lot. Uh, you could do a potentially, you could do a new plan, you know, increasing some of the square footage on the existing lot, reducing the other. There's a number of ways to do it. But um, in in if we were in fact to go ahead with a change, I did, this is, I have one more technical question. This is a legal question. If we, and this is for Mark Arshinbo or anyone else that has an opinion. When we advertised for the special permit, which we did advertise for, read into the record, we had specific language in there regarding the sections that we were trying to, you know, uh, issue the special permit or grant waivers, whatever we might call it in that regard, that were listed in that advertisement. Can we modify our and move to another section of the zoning bylaw under that same hearing without, you know, closing that up and saying, yeah, we rule on that, but we need to, you know, go ahead for another section with another advertised meaning and of additional language? I don't know if we have the kind of flexibility or not. I just don't know. So I'm asking Mark to look into that if possible.
Yeah, I'll look at, I'll look into that.
Whether we can just jump, you know, around into a different section after we've already advertised and read into the record the special permit um request was given to us. So I'd ask Kyle to be very careful in giving us the right language that for the waivers they're they're asking for under either special permit or site plan review or any category um, so that we have a real solid handle on exactly what we're looking for. Um, and if we do decide to put the parking in front of the building, there's an, there's another little, couple little more pieces in there that I think have to be considered. I thought that even if we granted a waiver that there's um a limit to, I thought it said fifteen percent or something along those lines. Uh, no matter what, we couldn't put more than fifteen percent of the cars in front of the building. So the other clarification I'm asking for is that we may have already, some of this may have been addressed, but I'm not sure by the Board of Appeals, Kyle, is what my question was. Have some of these, or was it just dimensional or just a change of use from uh, you know, to the residential use? I I wasn't clear on if ZBA had spoken on any of those issues.
The ZBA application was strictly for the change of use. I would also look at section nine point one point one C, which says no existing off-street parking spaces shall be eliminated if their removal would cause the number of spaces provided to be less than the number required in section nine point one point two, except by special permit.
Right.
It's just another, it's, I I would submit, you know, in deference to everything you're saying, I, you know, I am adjusted now to what has transpired before me and rightfully so. And so, um, it would seem that there are some confusing ins and outs and rabbit holes in the air bylaw as well. It makes it a little bit difficult to untangle these matters. So I appreciate the board's cooperation in trying to understand this, but Ken, to you, am I understanding your question to be that if we are discussing actions from sections that were not in the butter notification, whether that's acceptable? Is that the question, the legal question to Mark?
Well, it's that, plus the fact that it was advertised and the language is was, um, you know, read into the record of that advertisement. So we're only supposedly looking at that particular group in my estimation. That's just my thinking. I just don't want to be voting on something that ends up being different than what we advertised or what was read into the record. Um, I want to be clear that we open or close those issues so there's no comeback later on that says, you know, wait a minute. Uh, that's, that's my concern.
Right. Uh, to the board, that that's a very good question. It's a legal question. I would like to follow up with counsel on that. But you're right. I mean, when the original public hearing notice referenced nine one four B and nine one five C, which presumed that there would be offsite parking in the mix of parking. Uh, that's no longer the case, and we're also referencing uh section nine one ten. Uh, I'll have to look into whether we can proceed under the existing posting or do we need to repost. Uh, that's, that's a good question. Well, that's a legal question, which I feel comfortable answering in a definitive way right now.
Uh, Mark, what is the, excuse me, what is the posting period for the meeting? Is it three days?
Fourteen days prior to the meeting.
Uh, fourteen days prior to the meeting. For a special permit and site plan.
So it's today? For June ninth. Hi, Heather. I didn't see you in the corner there. Thank you. You're very, very small on my screen.
I didn't see you either.
But but lo- but very large in my, in my life. So anyway, um, yeah, so, um, with that, Kyle, let's um, let's, I think we've probably at a place where we can't actually have a conversation about that. We can't actually come to a determination about that right now. But we're gonna need to come to, come to a determination pretty quickly on that, um, in order to get it going forward. Um, thank you. No, thank you. I appreciate it. I sometimes wish we all came to the table with all the same information. So, and I appreciate your, um, I appreciate how that just went down. Um, do we want to discuss anything else besides the parking right now in front of the board?
Um,
Use the time a little bit?
I don't think that that's appropriate. There's, uh, that's the main issue, I believe.
Thank you.
Well, there'll be a revised drawing, though, in any event, showing the changes proposed by the DPW and whatever else we come up with, I presume, so.
That's correct. Yeah, I was gonna say the comments in the DPW need to be um taken care of also, and so that will be, we will see that at some point in the near future, hopefully.
For the site plan, and yeah, to Kyle's uh comment that he didn't see the special of the signage before, that was part of the interdepartmental comments from the police department, and I think Mr. may have addressed it verbally to me. He said, you know, we might want to consider some sort of, you know, just a sign of caution or whatever for the building. Nothing huge or, you know, big, but, you know, just concerned that people aren't used to the cars pulling in and out of there uh because it's been vacant for so long, and uh just want to make it safe, that's all.
No, thank you. Um, if you could, if you don't mind, Mark, could you make sure that you um highlight that and get it off to Kyle?
Oh, yeah.
Comments? Thank you. Appreciate it.
And um, this, uh, I will, he just forwarded me as as we speak here. It should be in my inbox right now upstairs. I'll forward that to the board tomorrow, the information that he just sent tonight.
Mark, if you would please just hold on that, given the information I've discerned this evening from the board, may I, may I please reconsider and and rescind that?
All right.
Thank you.
Now I want to read it, Kyle.
You, you're welcome to. It might help the discussion, but I, you know, I don't want to waste the board's time.
I got enough, I got enough going on, so thank you very much. Okay, I didn't realize I was sitting in a dark cave there all of a sudden. Um, have we covered what we can with the um uh special permit and site plan review fourteen Washington Street at this point?
Yes.
Mark, do you believe we've covered it also for the board?
Uh, yes. I mean, uh, yeah, my understanding is, you know, GBA is working on the site plan issues too, as requested by DPW, and and those items are definitely forthcoming. Uh, so they will have to be received and reviewed prior to the site plan decision as well. That, that's gonna happen.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I think uh a a motion to continue. So uh, the public hearing, the site plan review, this public hearing with the special part of the site plan review for fourteen Washington Street is appropriate at this point?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just cover one more topic, just so we have some information for the ninth? Uh, on the issue of um nine dot one dot ten dot C, this parking management plan, and I think, um, you know, Ken mentioned a fifteen percent uh at most, potentially fifteen percent at most, a thirty percent reduction. Um, you know, if we're looking at ten, that would take us down to seven uh parking spots. Is there in our bylaw, is that, is that, I I would appreciate some clarity on on that before next meeting because, you know, can a parking management plan in nine one dot one dot ten dot C dot three say, hey, we're so close to the train station that this parking management plan requires zero spots? Is that permissible at all, or are we limited to the thirty percent reduction off of nine dot one dot two?
I am not going to respond to that, Nathan, right now. Um, because uh we're in a session and I'm not going to take a chance, to be honest with you. It is a, it is a good discussion point. Um, I don't know if Ken, you want to take a shot at it, because we were discussing it earlier today. Um.
No, I think that the, the whole objective of the next step should be, in my estimation, and I'm not sure if the board agrees, is a clear cut written request from now. Based on the clear cut written request and the drawing, then we as a board can use our head and figure out what we think is the best for the town and for the downtown business district, uh, you know, form-based code district, and go from there. We may have, we may have Nathan on the one hand at zero and someone else on the other hand at ten, so who knows? We could end up at six.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that very much, Ken. And Nathan, more than happy to have a conversation with you and go through all the different permutations offline.
Sure. Yeah, and my intent is to, um, you know, just highlight what's, what's not possible so that we don't waste time with an application. You know, I agree with Ken, we need a written application, but we don't want to waste time on something that's not possible.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions about fourteen Washington Street? Okay, then, uh, entertain a motion to continue, please.
So I'm.
Uh, second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, we have motion in the second to continue the plug-up hearing for special permit for fourteen Washington Street and the continued site plan review fourteen Washington Street. All in favor? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Hearing done? It is passional, honestly. Thank you. Um, we've lost Kyle in the ocean.
Oh, jeez.
I think Kyle's fallen off the back of the cruise ship. I love you back on, Kyle.
Kyle, I wish I had.
This is my old house in Bel- in Belmont.
Hey, nice, yeah.
Actually, this is a very.
St. Thomas, yeah.
I've been there too.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, thank you, Kyle. Hey, I don't know if you're gonna stick around for the rest of the meeting, like you've got nothing else to do, Kyle. But um, I just wanted to ask, and I know we touched this a moment ago about Canyon Gate. Thank you very much for all that you've been doing over there. Um, did you get back comments from DPW?
I did. And that, that's what spurred on getting more information from the field. Uh, there's test pits that are going to be dug this uh Thursday, and then we'll move forward with getting some final uh uh manner of design that'll be suitable for DPW. I I saw a lot of opportunities. I stopped by the site today for ways to address stormwater management that I don't, like I say, I think it it's doubtful I can get things put back and packaged up in a way to get back into the board and DPW by June first. Um, so.
We appreciate that. Um, I I also appreciate that the people over there are living with a little bit of a snap tool on their hands. Um, and the neighborhood is awesome. Um, and finally, the one thing that's stuck in my mind, if I may, is the, there's a final comment in the DPW about the water leaving, I believe, onto the Sneakville Road area of the property.
Yes.
That was another comment that I was going to ask you, uh, just to hopefully you'd have a response to that.
I, I've, I've looked at it. Okay, yes, that is definitely a part of the actions to go this week.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay, so, awesome. Uh, this brings us to a part of the meeting that makes me very sad. We have to say goodbye to Ken.
I just have a quick, quick, the
Go ahead.
Continuance of the site plan review and the continuance of the special permit. Do we need to get anything from the applicant that concurs with extending that so that we don't mess up a date in the future or something, that we have to have a decision by?
Um, actually, I was gonna mention that uh back a few weeks ago, um, there was a law signed by the governor uh that has to do with the COVID nineteen pandemic called the Municipal Relief Act. And it states that boards have until forty-five days after the state of emergency is declared over in order to make decisions on pending applications that were before when things started. Uh, so my understanding that even if you could say the state of emergency ended, you know, yesterday or whenever things were supposed to open up, which I'm not clear did, yeah, until early July in order to make a decision on these cases. did, you have until early July in order to make a decision on these cases, according to this Municipal Relief Act. And we received a lot of this from KP Law. So it's my understanding that, you know, this, this controls now due to the pandemic and we don't need necessarily a written extension yet at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Diskin. So this concludes the section of our program this evening about fourteen Washington Street and the comments on Kennedy. Kyle, I do appreciate that. I think you're sticking around because you have the A-2 on your plate too, right Kyle?
Yeah, I wasn't really prepared for that, but that's fine. We can talk about it.
Yeah. Before we get there though, we have to, because Mr. Diskin is on a butter, he's going to recuse himself from the meeting?
He's not technically in a butter.
I'm sorry?
I am.
He's not technically in a butter.
No, I'm not, huh? Okay, that'd be good to know. Sixty feet away.
Miss, well, former, God rest his soul, Mr. Madigan's property comes up to the road between yours and property.
Right, but I'm within three hundred feet, right? Of the, isn't that a butter?
Eh, technically maybe.
Technically what?
Technically maybe.
Okay. If you tell me I'm not in a butter.
So, I, I don't, first of all, everything we discussed, Mr. Diskin.
I'm gonna recuse me.
And I think he's gonna feel more comfortable if he recuses himself, Kyle, at this point in, in the whole, in, in, in the matter. So thank you, Ken, very much. If there's anything, I will just let you know under announcements, I don't know what's gonna happen. But one of the things I was gonna ask for of the board, and I appreciate your indulgence all, under new business, is a revisit of the noise block law in the next year. Bring it to, and with the goal of bringing it to town meeting next year.
So Cindy can bring me back later on, right? She's gonna put me out of, out in the field now.
Okay.
I put you out and take you back in.
Okay. I'll come back in at the end.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, bye-bye now.
Kick me out.
So.
Oops.
I like that he actually tried to exit the screen.
There we go. I don't know what I did, but I muted myself. So under A-2B, on our agenda, A-2B, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Energy Project Site Plan Amendment is what we have on the agenda. It's my understanding, Mark, if I'm not incorrect, which I often am, that we are going to attempt to open the hearing on the amendment this evening?
Uh, yes, it's a site plan. So Heather was gonna say, meeting.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Yeah, the formal consideration of it. And, yeah, I was just gonna give a little bit of background that since we had so many new planning board members who weren't on the board in 2017, but back in 2017, the planning board approved, approved a large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system called A-2B on the location across from the Madigan Lane subdivision between that and the power lines down below there. And, uh, after the approval, there was a lawsuit from the abutters. And my understanding is there was an agreement between the abutters and the applicant to come forward with a new application which would address their concerns. And with a slightly modified site plan for that large-scale solar. And, you know, there's, there's a access road and, you know, that has changed a little bit, but I think the engineer can better speak to that. And it was also my understanding that town council agreed that this would fall under a site plan amendment, not an entirely new site plan application. So that's, you know, our completeness of the package is, you know, my professional belief that the, the application package they submitted for A-2B, as opposed to two, is, is complete and ready for planning board acceptance. As we usually do when a new plan is before us, especially since so many of the members are new, we usually let the applicant walk through the plan and, you know, sort of give us the lay of the land. I would also recommend that the planning board schedule a site visit very soon, in the next few weeks, in order to visit the site personally with the applicant and the applicant's engineer.
I think that's really important.
Yep. So with that being said, Kyle, have we, do we need to do anything formally to open this site plan review? Take a motion? Chris, Ben?
It's just, it's just a discussion. It's just a site plan review. There's no hearing. You don't need to open anything.
Well, the planning board has to accept the plan for consideration. Right. Yeah. So the plan, what the planning board needs to do is, is accept the plan for consideration with Star Supply and.
The DPD motion, Jeff?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Motion that we accept the plan for the A-2B for review.
Do you have a second? Second. Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no abstentions, I'm assuming? So we have, excuse me, one, oh, he's not in the meeting, so there's nothing. Don't tell Ken I said that. Fantastic. So, Mr. Burchard?
Kyle?
Thank you.
I've got two of you on my screen, Kyle.
Yeah, well, it's a complicated, you know, very highly technological setup we have here at GPR. I'm actually talking to you and seeing, and you're seeing me on my phone while I have, uh, you logged into my computer. And if I, if I would be able to share my screen, it might be more salient to the, the new members who haven't seen this project. And again, we're submitting this as a modification to the previously approved site plan.
Kyle?
Yes?
Kyle, as you go through the plan for us, could you pay particular attention to describing to us what the amended parts are as, and what the difference is from the amended version from the previously accepted version and why the change was made when you reached those places? Would you do that for us?
Absolutely. Love to do that. It's pretty simple, actually, at the end of the day, to describe that to you. We did include a long list of things that changed on individual sheets with details and so on. But I mean, it really boils down to something very simple. And if I were able to share my screen, is that, if Cindy's in the stratosphere, if she can let me share my screen, I'll attempt it.
Hey Kyle, this is Cindy. You should be outside with, with screen sharing.
Okay.
Just make sure you do the right one. There you go.
Yeah. Can everyone see my screen? Okay.
Uh, four dot three, correct?
Yes, that's right. Now I'm gonna go up just to the cover sheet to be able to give you on the plot plan, just the larger scale, you know, view of everything. Hopefully everyone has this plan. And I'll just do a little zooming in here. So I'll just use my hand cursor to kind of guide you, guide your eye to certain things. Here's Ken's house here. And this is Washington Street coming up and Madigan Lane. The rail trail is over here. And, um, I think more drive comes in over here. The high school is even further down below off the bottom of the screen.
Yep.
So there's an existing break in the guardrail when you're coming up this windy, twisty part of Washington Street. And that's where this entrance to the facility begins. And, and so there's a driveway that comes down. It has a wetland crossing, which is currently in review at the Conservation Commission.
Kyle, quick, I'm sorry, could you describe the elevation difference between Washington, where you just put your cursor, between the entrance at Washington and where your hand, your cursor is now? What's the elevation change?
Something like twenty feet, maybe more. We, there's a profile where we could look at that exactly. And then from there, it comes up, that's the low point. That's where there's an existing intermittent stream that actually comes right through the middle of the Madigan Lane subdivision, all the way down from the hospital, way up here. Comes down through here, and we cross it with, you know, a double-barreled, you know, natural substrate bottom forty-eight inch culvert. And so then we come up, we pass that crossing. And so just as your, for information's sake, nothing along this first part of this driveway has changed in the application. Then the next part of the driveway is where the, all the changes have occurred. So between that wetland crossing and what's here is the proposed solar farm area, because this solar farm area, well, it, it adjusted a little bit, but the majority of the change is in between here. And that was a negotiated settlement with the abutters who had filed suit against the project to push the road farther away from their properties to save more of the existing forest that was on their backyard property line. So then.
So further south now? Is that what you're saying, Kyle? The road's now further south to accommodate that?
The road moved further south to accommodate that negotiated settlement.
Okay.
So if everyone's kind of oriented to where they are in space with the rail trail and Washington Street, and, you know, the power line easement, I should have mentioned, is just, that's what you see when you drive down to this low spot. You see this long view across the rail trail.
Right.
So just to the right of that, up at the top of the hill, you know, that's where this solar farm is placed.
Right.
So let me go down. This is just the existing conditions. Maybe this helps a little bit. This is where the break in, this is where the break in the guardrail occurs. And there's an existing old cart path that comes down here. And more or less, we are hugging the property line with our, with our proposed driveway until we get down to this wetland crossing here. And then we had been following the property line before, which allowed for a lot less buffer disturbance, but the negotiation changed that. This is the next half of the existing conditions map. Once we leave that wetland crossing, now we're coming further down here, whereas before we were coming higher. This is another head of wetlands that's down at the site, and this is the area of the solar farm.
So Kyle, are you gonna have to snake the, the road between those two ledges? Is that the idea?
Well, that's not really necessary. It was, it's possible to go through the ledge or over the ledge. And so that's not, yeah, we were not really holding that as a constraint.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. So here is the driveway. And again, this, this first, from about here, there's a wetland replication area here. There's a wetland replication area here. There's a pretty steep embankment, uh, system here. And then the road entrance is right here at that break in the guardrail. So we calm down. It's paved because DPW is concerned about erosion going down at eight percent slope, which is the steepest allowed. And then we get down to the crossing, and then we come back up. And right past the crossing is where we started to bend the driveway away from the abutters. So we bent the driveway away from the abutters where we practically could. And there was a, you know, the, the previous configuration, which I apologize, I could make a comparison drawing that might make this easier to understand what the changes are. But essentially, this, this road was, uh, you know, maybe I can just approximate something, you know, this road was kind of coming through here, you know, like this. And so now we moved it farther south to get it away. We're further in the buffer. It makes for a greater challenge getting it through the Conservation Commission. Also, since we had last gotten this approved, there's now estimated habitat. We've made a MESA filing to NHESP. We're addressing their comments as we speak. So, you know, long and short of it is, we moved the road further south. There was a retention basin that was up here. And, and now it's been reshaped and reconfigured to be down here. And it's providing the same amount of volume in the retention, detention, and so on. And it just has a different out, you know, outfall discharge point with a similar treatment to level spread the water as it leaves. But of course, the, the primary focus is on the water staying in here, retaining, recharging into groundwater. So up in the solar field, a couple of small differences that are more germane to the Conservation Commission. We have a swath here that was, because of shading, the applicant decided that it would be appropriate to call out for some of these trees to be topped. So that has caused us a little bit of a challenge. But that is part of the application now.
How would that be for the topping?
I forget exactly. I apologize. I wasn't quite prepared to discuss all that. That's definitely being scrutinized very stringently at the Conservation Commission. But I think it's approximately, I want to say, my recollection is fifty feet. So if you took a, you know, this area of the solar field is, is fairly flat. There's one contour line across this whole area. So basically, it's about fifty feet out and then up, if that makes sense. So you, you tab the level line at, at the ground level, you come over to where the trees are, you go up fifty feet in this area. So if you can tell with the contours in here, grade drops down, you know, these are one-foot contours, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and sometimes more feet. So maybe it's effectively, you know, fifty-seven, fifty-eight feet to where the trees would be topped.
So, I misunderstood what to, I thought topping, you're taking off some portion of the trees there? Is that what, maybe I misunderstand what topping means? Could you clarify?
That's correct. You would, you'd have somebody up on a bucket or whatever, however they got up there, and you'd measure up the appropriate location, and the top of the tree would come down. Now, it's understood and anticipated that, you know, if, especially if it's a, if it's a pine or something, those trees, those trees would die and simply become habitat for woodpeckers or other creatures and so on. And what that would do when those trees do die is let the understory explode and come up. So overall, it's not really a net environmental issue there because we're, we're just changing the habitat, although that could be viewed as some kind of impact. We're working through those issues with the NHESP and the Conservation Commission. So effectively, that's, those are the changes, the primary changes being in this middle section where the road moved further south. And this tree topping here. Now, in addition to that, what's happened is additional landscaping in this area to densify the understory is also proposed. So we're, you know, we, we've reached those agreements with the abutters. That's the plan. If you'd like, I can go through the other sheets, but they're the same sheets that just show, for instance, this one is just the erosion sediment control plan. It's just showing that there's a straw bale and in places, silt fence barrier to control erosion. There's what we call a resource impact map showing where we are in the buffers and the wetland encroachment. Then we have our site distance plan and profile, which is the same.
Hey Kyle?
Yep.
As you, as you scroll through, Mr. Krantz had the question of what's the elevation change within Washington Street?
Well, here we.
I think.
Yeah, here we are.
Yeah, that's.
Let's look here at about a two, let's say two sixty-nine. Okay. And we don't even reach the low point until the next sheet. Here, which is at a forty-five, forty-six, sixty-nine to forty-six. Enginere can't add twenty-three feet. Um, so.
Thank you.
From, from there, the, the point of change in the plans is really from just past the culvert, the low point where the wetland crossing is, where the intermittent stream flows through. The, the driveway changes. It comes up in grade a little bit to kind of a high point at the, this curve here. And then it starts just gent. And then it starts just gent, gently falling down, but it's got to stay high enough.
Right.
So that we can have this basin form here and, and serve its function. And then it, and then we have to, you know, then we have to really come up in order to get to the solar array up top.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um.
Kyle, I got another question for you.
Yeah.
And I know this is part of the original plan, but if, if, just briefly, if I were walking on the rail trail, what do I see of Air Solar Two? In other words, how far distant does the, does the solar field begin, uh, from the trail? And what am I gonna see? Am I gonna see a large chain link fence, uh, 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 facing the trail? What is that gonna, or is it gonna be, uh, screened with landscaping and trees? Or what, what do you anticipate for that?
So here's maybe this sheet will give you some indication of, here's the rail trail itself. This is the property.
Isn't that the, um, the rail trail, isn't there the ever source, uh, is it, it must be, it's ever sources, isn't it? These.
Yeah, uh, so we, we have.
I don't think you show the trail.
Well, I think this is the trail right here.
Okay, I got it. Yep, sure.
And so the trail has, uh, wooded area in between that has then a drop in grade that drops all the way into this lower basin.
Yep.
That drop further into this lower basin.
Yep.
And there's a fair amount of grade here from the two forty-seven to two sixty-one. And the solar field is at a two fifty-eight. Or let's say even up at two sixty. Okay, so you're about parallel.
Right.
So through the screen of trees, there is a, a nine-foot fence, chain link fence.
Okay.
There is, um, you know, there is the sewer easement, but you don't see that. And the panels themselves at the top of them are about at nine feet, I believe. We have detail at the end of the plans. And then you have the Dominion, uh, easement, and this will have a chain link fence, uh, along this whole run. So as you're, you know, if you're coming northbound on the rail trail, when the clearing happens for the, uh, two hundred and fifty-foot wide overhead power easement for Dominion, or, um, sorry, for National.
National grid, yeah.
Yeah, then you'll see, if you look right, you know, you'll see more infrastructure of a industrial nature. Um, the, so then we had the wetland replications haven't changed. And it stopped me at any time. I don't mean to scroll through this quickly. I am supposed to be on something at seven thirty. But if you've got questions, let's talk about them now. So here's the additional landscaping that was proposed. If you can tell sort of the outline of the basin, it's the top finger of the basin here.
Yep.
Through the, the inlet, intake with a sediment four bay into the basin. And then along this upper edge is where, um, additional landscape screening was put. Here's that steep slope to get from the driveway low up into, um, the solar field. And then along, so this is also an area of tree topping. With the supplemental understory plantings.
Yeah.
And that's the last sheet in the set, um. I can't, I can't hear whoever is speaking.
I think it's Mr. Gardner and he's just.
So Kyle, thank, Kyle, thank you very much for going through this. Um, if you don't mind, I do have a couple of questions. Can you go back to the, um, just the locust map, the first page, seat one to one? And the lower one, uh, the overall map and zoning. So one of the questions we had previously, that's perfect. Thank you very much, Kyle. So I want to draw your attention all to, uh, just to orient ourselves, the gray area at the top is the proposed solar farm area. Down to the left of that, it says map lot twelve dash two.
Yep.
Map lot twelve dash one, map lot thirteen dash one, and map lot thirteen dash two. So those are the four lots, if I'm not mistaken, that this crosses, correct Kyle?
Yeah. Uh, no, uh, not twelve dash.
No, twelve dot two, excuse me, I'm sorry, yes. Twelve dot two is ever source, and that is the owner. Twelve dash one, it still shows up in the assistance database as a cow fields, uh, Calvin Moore. Thirteen dash one and thirteen dash two are both owned by, and I can't remember the name, Triple G A E out of Ann Arbor.
Triple A E, yeah.
Triple A E, yeah, thanks. So my, my, my question is this, this is kind of, folks have come to the board before and Air Solar, and Air Solar One this happened too. And it may have happened with Air Solar Two, I'm not sure. But, uh, we did, we never asked the question in the past, you had control of all the property. Now, at one point, I think there was a discussion of, um, uh, eighty-one X, in other words, drawing a line, and you can't see my hand, but drawing a line around the bold outlines, turning all, all three lots into one. It's a, I believe it's eighty-one X, is that correct?
That would be, that would, that would be a A and R correct, too.
Exactly. And I don't believe that ever came, I don't know if that came to fruition or not, I just can't recall off the top of my head. But anyway, long story short, you, there are agreements in place that the proponents have control on all three lots right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, the, these lots were in the Wilder Family Trust, and they've been purchased by the applicant. And twelve dash one was emerged, was somehow merged with, there was a, a previous.
That was the eighty-one X, thank you.
That was, that was the eighty-one X.
Yeah, so basically what eighty-one X, yeah.
Yeah, there's another eighty-one X that created these lots as well.
Exactly. So basically what eighty-one X is, you take the outside boundaries of a couple of lots guys and they get, the, the interior boundaries just disappear. They get, they, uh, uh, subsumed, if you will, by the outside boundaries. It gives you large, basically larger parcels. Well, anyway, um, Kyle, do you have to run?
I, 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 I hesitate, I'm sorry, I'm in a bind. I, I.
That's okay.
I would rather answer your questions if there are outstanding questions about the application, if you have any.
I don't know, go ahead, Jonathan.
I think for myself, that Kyle, uh, thank you, you, you answered that the questions are on my mind, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, my pleasure, thank you.
And we did get copies of the plans, Kyle. I will, I will apologize. I can't do this on the computer because I can't blow it up the way you do. So I had Mark printing for me today. So I, I poured, I read through the comments at this point on about half of the sheets. I haven't gone through everything. You know, it's like a business case, read the comments, look at the pictures, read the last page first. Um, and so, uh, I may, I probably will have questions I may ask of you, I might ask of Mark.
Sure.
But we're really in the beginning of this process, so at this point. Um, so I want to say thank you, and if you do have other appointments, I want to, you know, let's not, let's not hold. If you don't need to hold Kyle, guys, are we all set?
Yeah, just one thing, Kyle, you'll be able to join us on this walk?
Set a time, I should be able to.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, so yeah, do we want to set the, uh, safe visit, uh, while we have Kyle?
Um, I would make a request if we could do it on a, on a, on a weekend day. I know we've, I know we tried to do them during the week. Kyle is a, a weekend morning, okay with you? A Saturday morning?
Let's, uh, make it a Saturday morning. If it's early, that's great.
Uh, what's, well, don't, don't challenge me with early, Kyle. I'm gone from the house before five in the morning on Saturdays, too.
Totally self-serving, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I assure you.
It's okay. Um, what would work for the rest of the board members on a Saturday morning, hopefully?
Whatever.
Sorry?
Anything.
Eight, nine.
Eight thirty, nine o'clock, nine o'clock is fine, eight thirty would be fine for me. Um, I, my dispatch happens at six thirty and then I'm free to get back to town. So eight thirty or nine would be great. Either one would work if it works for Kyle. Um, this Saturday is out for me. That gives us, um, the thirtieth, uh, the sixth.
Well, the thirtieth is out for you, right, Jeff?
Um.
That's this.
I could do it. I could do it this Saturday on the thirtieth. I can make that work at nine.
No.
I'm sorry?
What difference does it make? Do the sixth.
Okay, let's do the sixth then, if it's okay. Six, nine, uh, nine o'clock on Saturday morning, the sixth of June?
Am I wrong? Is there a rush?
Well, would like to get through the process. I'm not sure how.
I know, but our next meeting is in for another two weeks, so.
It's on the ninth. That's the thing, the sixth is just before the ninth.
Uh, that would work. And there's a little parking area where the power lines cross, where there's some ledge.
Big, well.
Right there, just have to walk a little bit.
Actually, the, the easiest place to go is underneath the power lines on the, on the east side of Washington Street at the very low point in the road.
Mm-hmm.
There's a pull-off, it's a sandy area. That's the easiest place for people to park, I found, and we can meet there.
Yeah, that's a good spot. Yeah.
Sounds good. So June sixth at nine AM?
Yeah, June sixth works at nine AM. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. See you on Saturday.
Yep.
The sixth.
On the sixth.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Bye now, thank you.
Bye. Um, any further comments on this, Mark? I'm going to invite, uh, Mr. Diskin. In, in the interest of being wide open, left the waiting room, so I had to text him when he can come back.
Uh, yeah, all I wanted to mention is that, uh, the Conservation Commission has been, uh, with the, uh, notice of intent for the planning board. And they, they have hired a, uh, environmental consulting firm to look at the, the erosion control, stormwater management, the tree topping. And, you know, many of the issues that our DPW would also be interested in. So, uh, we can sort of dovetail on the, uh, peer review study that the Conservation Commission is, is headlining, so to speak. And, uh, so we'll, we'll be receiving the information through the Conservation Commission that will be pertinent for our review of this as well. Uh, so for that reason, and so that we don't duplicate efforts with the DPW, um, it was agreed between the DPW and the Conservation Commission that DPW would wait to get the recommendations of the consultant uh, prior to making their own, uh, recommendations, since there might be a lot of overlap there, so.
Thank you. Yep. Okay. So, um, yes.
Could we also get a copy of the ruling, the settlement, so that we, as the board, understand what the, the citizens and the proponents, uh, agreed to, so that we know where our scope is?
So I'll respond to that in the other way I know, and I might even ask, uh, Mr. Gardner, because he's a little more experienced than I do. I don't know that that's available to us, but we can ask.
Okay.
Is that a fair way to put it, Mr. G, Bob?
I think I was muted. I apologize. Step aside, I, uh, I'm familiar with that road up there since the nineteen sixties, so I stepped away from the plan. Uh, well, whatever the chairman says is fine with, uh, me as a spectator.
Yeah, no, it's just, there, there may be stipulations in the agreement between the parties that it stays, remains between the parties. I just, I just don't know the answer to that. I, I, I've, I've, I've only had the misfortune in being in, in one situation where, uh, the other party didn't want, didn't want me to tell anybody, so I won't.
But yeah, if we're to represent the, the citizenry, then it would seem to be good information to have what they.
Will ask.
What they want.
But we'll make a request and, um, it's truly up to the parties and who are the parties, uh, involved in the agreement.
Okay.
Thanks. Um. I think that wraps it up unless there's other comments on this?
Right, the, uh, the board should continue, uh, the site plan review meeting for this, uh, to June ninth.
I would appreciate a motion from anybody, Mr. Diskin.
Make a mo, make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Air Solitude to June ninth.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Second. Ah-ha, moved in second, any further discussion?
Not with Mr. Diskin.
Hearing, hearing none. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? Nobody. Okay, and, uh, abstentions? Mr. Diskin, you weren't in the room, so you can't even abstain. How's that? Fantastic. Uh, next on the agenda is our town planner update.
Uh, I don't have any special update for tonight. Uh, my main thing right now is, is coming up to speed on the full-time, you know, basis here. And, uh, there's a lot, especially with fourteen Washington Street. It's been, it's been, uh, kind of a slide, keeping everything straight, but I will endeavor to do, uh, to improve there and make sure that they get us a package that we can act on.
Yep. Mark, I want to, thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask also, Mark has been working, uh, very closely with, um, uh, Bob Gardner and his son, uh, regarding the, uh, proposal, the, the, uh, development of the corner, of the lockdown on.
Three five Park Street.
Thank you. They've been, on three five, I see so many emails about it, Bob, and I apologize, I've been unable to meet, um, with any of your meetings. I, I'm just in my truck all the time, going.
Don't worry about it. You all have, uh, full-time jobs or, you know, jobs, you know, the best job, the most important job in the world is of being a mother and raising children. And at this time, and, and I'm not trying to shine the apple here, but, you know, I mean, I understand, you know, I'm, I get the luxury of being retired. I've got a lot of time on my hands, but you know, you, you're doing God's work here for the town. I appreciate it.
Thanks, I, I get to start counting the days after Friday next week, when I retire. Um, so with that being said, Mark, um, I know I've been paying attention to the emails, uh, about what's been going on with that. And that comes up on our agenda on the ninth also, correct?
Um, actually.
No.
The ninth, uh, we determined that there wasn't enough time to, to do the Levo posting for a special permanent hearing for that. But I will be, uh, conferring with Mr. Gardner and his son over Zoom, uh, this week. Uh, to try to get them, it, you know, to the point where they can submit a package, uh, to us for the, uh, second meeting in June.
Mm-hmm.
And many of the issues that pertain to fourteen Washington Street as far as parking and waivers also apply in this situation, so.
Yep.
Uh, you know, so, you know, we'll take it step by step.
We, we do all this work on changing our bylaws and the first projects we get are with the challenging parts of the bylaws.
About that. And I do want to say, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate all Mr. Shambro's time and Mr. Manoyan's time. And again, I'm not trying to shine the apple, but I really do appreciate that. We're gonna, uh, I don't know if this is correct, English, Zoom meeting tomorrow at two. And we're targeting, I guess, the twenty-third, which is, I think, two weeks from, uh, the ninth of June.
The twenty-third is the second meeting in June, yep.
Yeah, right, that's what we're kind of targeting. I'm gonna try to test up the application a little bit, too, and do that. And I, I do appreciate it, I really do.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's great. Thank you very much. Um.
Thank you for all of your time.
Yeah. Moving on to our administrative announcements on our agenda, old business. Anybody have anything on old business? Hearing none. Um, new business, I am going to, uh, I found the third pet peeve of mine. Um, y'all just missed it, but the guy was cutting the lawn on my street next door. I think quarter of the eight is late for cutting the lawn. I would hope that we can spend some time between now and the end of the year. Um, Nathan, should you and I be fortunate enough to be returned to the planning board? Seeing as how we're running on a post, there's a chance. Um, I'd like to add to the list of things, um, that we have been picking up on to the noise bylaw and maybe take a look at that.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that if we, uh, were to go down that route, I'm, I'm hoping that there'd be some kind of a public input component to that.
Yeah.
We've vital, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I just, it's just. Yes, I think the quality of our life will go up dramatically. Um, though I do have a question, and this is way off topic, does anybody know where the sign came from near the dog park that says, "Train horns don't always blow"? There's a sign. Who knows what happened? So you all have a task. Yes, Mr., yes, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, uh, back in the days when I was town council and Canongate was first constructed back in seventy, seventy-two timeframe, those people, um, uh, you know, the residents over there were turn. And it went before, we had a hearing down at the DPU, uh, the Department of Public Utilities, and they were petitioning. And, uh, as I recall, the DPU ruled that safety outweighed their, um, you know, their sense of silence, and, uh, they didn't. But, but I am familiar with that sign because they walked down there a lot. I don't hear, oh, she has a dog. But, uh, but, uh, I was surprised when I saw that. I'm not sure where the sign came from. Because in ancient history, I think the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities ruled that, um, uh, the sirens were necessary. the Department of Public Utilities ruled that the sirens were necessary. But that goes back, I mean, 25, 30, 35 years.
You mean, yeah, exactly. No, I was actually, I'm very attuned to signs, and I saw that recently, and I said, I've never seen that before. So anyway, I was just kind of curious about that sign. We have also on our list, if there's anything else, nothing else under new business this evening, the meeting minutes for March 10th and for May 12th. And I noticed that Mr. Krantz was diligent about the March 10th meeting minutes, and there was a colon missing that I believe got added, Heather?
Yep.
Excellent.
Mask could be, did you do it?
Yes.
Yes. So, thank you, thank you very much, I don't know if you all had a chance to read the March 10th minutes with Ken's comments. I have, I would be more than happy to entertain a motion to accept them as, to accept them with Mr. Krantz's inputs.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved to second, and to accept the meeting minutes for March 10th. Any further discussion? Hearing none and seeing no waving arms, I love this new technology. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? That's it. May 12th, I should have taken this up at the beginning, I knew about it then, and I hadn't, I didn't talk about it. But May 12th minutes will be available to us at our next meeting. I would ask you all to take a moment before the next meeting to read them, so we can get on through. Anybody, yes?
Sorry, I just want to jump in. Before we, I just want to circle back to new business for a second.
Sure.
And I don't want to throw Mark under the train, but, but, you know, it seems like we missed some information this go-around. And, and not all of us, as you said, you have a hard time with the 11 by 17s. So I think it's important, there's, there's, there's something about being able to meet together that's valuable. And so as, you know, the governor's announced phased reopening, I'd just like to know, just keep us informed. You know, I think the sooner, the sooner that we're permitted to come back, even just a few of us, and meet around the table, and maybe still do Zoom, so the public can be involved. But whatever the solutions are, I'd just like to be informed that we are making progress back to some normal state.
I agree completely, I think, you know, this is working, but it's, I don't think, a good long-term way of operating, it's, you know.
I, my sense of fairness is what I think is most impinged upon by this. I want proponents to be able to sit in front of us, see our faces, get our questions. We see their faces, we get their answers, we get their requests. Kyle, Kyle took it very, very well, but there was information Kyle didn't have from before this evening, that was unfair to him. Yes, Ms. Julie?
I really appreciate you bringing that up, Nathan, because I think it's important to talk about. And especially with Cindy here and Mark here, as you explore that, and as we go down those paths, I hope the path will be open for people to choose both options, because I will not be coming to that room anytime in the near future.
Did you say you will not be coming to the room?
No, but I would appreciate still being able to be a participant in our board meetings, because as you know, my attendance is quite good.
And guys, I'll also tell you, I have spent the last seven-plus weeks out in the public. So I limit my contact with people tremendously, because I don't know if I'm the vector. It's been very upsetting to my mother, and we're making arrangements to change that in the next week. It's been tough, but I do appreciate it, Nathan, I really, really do. But I, every morning, I have contact with between 25 and 35 people depending on dispatch. And we do our best, and I've been fortunate, but I don't know, and I would not want to be the vector for other people. Given that, anything else in anybody's mind?
I was going to circle back, too, to old business and follow up on what Nathan said, but if we could ask, again, Mr. Ashambo to, when we have projects that are being constructed in the field, as they are right now, to just keep giving us a little quarterly report, or a monthly report, or something on the progress. So Cataldo has a foundation in, which is a good thing. The job on Central Ave, you know, and any of the things that we went by our board that got, you know, approved, or got rejected, or whatever that might be, the Aho development, the A and R lots, you know. I think it's good for all of us to, you know, just get a report from the town planner. You know, could be every two months, just add it to the announcements of the town planner report, and give us a status, you know, they're 80%, they're 50%, something like that. So we have an idea that, you know, drawings we approved are going along, that's all.
Yeah, I was actually surprised to see the Aho Foundation is in as quickly as it went in. I drove by it the other day, and wow, there's, Aho, I'm sorry, my hands are in front of my face. Aho was, started the building, they're putting in a Butler Building over there on, that must be. I'm sorry?
Cataldo.
Cataldo, over on.
Yeah, Westford Road. Oh, okay, what I was just about to ask you about is, because I've seen activity on Westford Road, that's the Cataldo project?
That's the Cataldo, yes.
Moving along appropriately in conformance with.
Took him a long time to start, but he is, they, I got to imagine, I didn't, I've been talking to Charlie Schultz about a couple of different things. Charlie, I know, is a stickler, so I've got to imagine that they're, that they're touching the bases as they need to. Poor Charlie, I called him on an issue Friday, and then on Saturday morning, my phone butt dialed him for like five minutes. I was in the yard doing the yard work, and my phone was in my pocket. He called me back, he said, who is this? I felt, I felt terrible. So anyway, with that being said, I think we are done for this evening's meeting. I want to thank everybody for joining, and I would love, I think Mr. Diskin, as like as much as I, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for letting me attend, everybody.
No, Bob, I want, I'm going to say one thing from a public announcement stage, please vote. We vote June 2nd, I think? I voted by mail, it's fantastic.
June 2nd, only the residents in precinct two, because I've already voted by absentee ballot.
Yep, please vote. Okay, guys.
Election on June 2nd.
Yes, Mr. Krantz?
Well, fast. Monday, June 1st, 6 o'clock, virtual Zoom meeting, a public hearing involving a grant for some COVID money for Air.
I saw that, Mr. Manoyan sent that out today.
And the stronger the application, so I'm asking people to get the word out. If you can come, great, if you get the word out to other people to sign up and participate, to just show up at the Zoom meeting, the more people, the greater the chances that Air will have a successful application.
Exactly, and the backup on that is, there's a grant, there's a grant program for towns to submit grants for assistance from the state, for money spent on COVID. And I think we're going for a grant for about 75% of the available funds that we are allowed to have. And I know, I know Alan's been working on that hard this last week, thanks for bringing it up, Jonathan, I appreciate that. Nothing else? Thank you very much, all, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night, guys, thank you.
Goodbye.